First item is consent agenda. Minutes of the last meeting, budget review and payment of bills.
Make a motion we accept the minutes from the last meeting, last meeting and the budget payment of bills.
Second.
Got a second. All right.
Yeah. All I heard was that.
Looked like I came here and not.
That's a comment.
Uh, next we'll move to, um, public comment. Bill? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Bill Mobbin. Living thirty-one West Seventh Avenue in Coors County today, homes. I've been a very resident for fifty-five years. Been in the manufactured housing business for fifty-four and a half of that time period. So, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history of me and some of the things that, uh, affected me whenever we had our last meeting on behalf of.
I'm gonna give you a couple of minutes. We got a lot of budget stuff.
It'd be no problem. I promise you. Uh, I've been to, as you might imagine, I've been to half a century of planning and zoning and city council meetings. From Grosebeck, T, Mahe, Fairfield, U-Nate, I've been there. And to pass all that by, I've also been a three-term planning and zoning commissioner for the city of Coors County. So I know a little bit about, I think about how this works. And, and Ms. Davis was here last week, John Jackson was here representing her as her friend. And there was a lot of derogatory comments made, the one that hurt her the most was, I think when it was made that he wouldn't live next to her, to a manufactured home either. And so, whenever that comment came out, that also affected me, when I'm thinking that. So let me tell you a little bit if that was me, what would have happened because she's given the most. She saved for ten years so that she could get a house with five bedrooms, three baths and with that. Her three children, one who graduated from college just recently. Grandchildren and a disabled daughter could all have a same place to go for their holiday. And obviously that deal was going nowhere. Then we found out that there was a sewer line there which kinda came up at the end, which I was kinda surprised at because on RP&amp;Z that I've been on before, the engineer would always put us up to speed before anything came up. And we spent a lot of time on something that wasn't gonna happen and it was really, really hurt her because she felt like she was being ridiculed. Uh, I'm on the YMCA board, have been for forty years. Everything I do is to benefit.
Can you get to your point, cause you had to end in two minutes already?
I got one minute to go. I'm a member, I'm a member of about eight organizations and one of them I can tell you is the Verre Foundation. The Verre Foundation is, who is primarily responsible for the Texas, for your Kearns Veterans Park. I, I would never, I voted for it whenever that happened, I would never say that, but none of these people ever cared that I lived in a manufactured home or anything else because I don't know how we take into consideration, somebody can write in and say, "People live in mobile homes are trash." Which is what the one comment that we had in the whole building. We would have never allowed that in Coors County. Somebody's got something to say bad, they need to show up and say it, not an opinion. And anyway, Ms. Davis respectfully withdraws her, her application if she does not want to live in Kearns any longer after all this time, so that will take the pressure off. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Who made the comment?
I think it was sent in, you know, when he sent out for comments.
Yeah, it was sent in from.
It was mailed in.
Oh, mailed in, okay.
Yeah, it was mailed in.
Um, go ahead. Coors County does everything right. Yeah. Uh, so we'll. We don't even have to discuss them that first one then. Oh, wait a minute. Lauren, I forgot you, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Do y'all want me to stand or sit? Um, we, we were supposed to be on the agenda last week, but we didn't, I guess, call to make sure we were this week. Um, the Cotton Harvest Festival used to have the five K run before it. I am organizing, we've pretty much already put it together. The Cotton Harvest Festival Committee has approved it. Um, in my son Harden's memory for pregnancy and infant loss awareness month, that's why I wanted it in October. And it was brought to my attention, like, why don't you do it before the Cotton Harvest Festival? Get more people to come to it and then that will stay and spend money here. Um, we've partnered with the March of Dimes, so all the money that we raise is going towards families, towards mothers, towards babies that need it. In NICUs and all that around here. Um, but we've already got it pretty much organized, people that are donating for the water stations, all that. We just need y'all to approve to close the roads. We're using the exact same map that Teresa Darby used for her five K, I have it. We would just do the exact same route.
Have you lined up your people, the point, tell them which way to go?
I've got lots of people, yes, we have called so many people.
Alright, uh, we'll have to do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay.
You might have any objections?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I think you're very.
Good idea, I'll take you.
Yeah, really good.
One question that we had was, um, somebody mentioned that there's a right, insurance rider that we may have to have through the city or something. Do you know anything about that?
I think it falls. Like, we have a liability waiver already for all the runners, so.
I think it falls under our event policy. I mean, we, I think we have up to two a year. I'll, I'll double check, but I think it falls under that. Let me look, because I'm not a hundred percent.
Okay, that was our only concern, making sure of that.
Keys, thank you for taking the last two minutes.
No, you're welcome, I was, I was counting in my head to take you.
Alright, that's all we got, we'll move to the items, first item, uh, we'll strike it.
Thank y'all.
Strike that one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They withdraw, there's no need to discuss and consider. I think she was gonna get it passed anyway. Set the link.
It's not here. It's in email, but I don't have it, it's just not here.
Well, table that one and move it to next month and maybe he'll be here this one. Next item is discussed, consider increase to water sewer rate is required, uh, by the increase from the city of Coors County.
Okay, as we knew, last year, city of Coors County was gonna raise our rates fifty cents last year, they're gonna raise our rates fifty cents again this year, starting on October one. And to cover that, plus the increase in the cost of everything, we have to go up a little bit more than that. Last year, we just did the minimum increase, this year, my suggestion is that we go up a little bit more. My suggestion is that we go up. Our base rate include, for, for residential customers includes the first two thousand gallons of water and two thousand gallons of sewer, I believe. Increase the water rate by seventy cents for the base rate and then any per thousand after that, eighty-five cents. If we did that, the total revenue increase is gonna be thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars. And about half of that is gonna be going to Coors County. That's not money that we're gonna keep, that's not money we're gonna be able to put in our budget, that is money that is going directly for our water purchase. And we also would have to increase our sewer rate. And my suggestion is to increase our sewer rate sixty-five cents for the minimum and sixty-five cents per thousand afterward. Just keep that one the same. Um, and that's gonna increase revenue by less than eighteen thousand dollars a year. And, and that seems like a lot, but when, when our provider is going up that much and then increases and the cost of labor and the cost of chemicals and repairs and maintenance and supplies goes up, we have to go up just as, as much as we possibly can, just to cover that.
Have you figured what that would do to the average household increase a month?
Um, I have. Just depending on how much they use.
Yeah.
Um, if they use five thousand gallons a month, with the water and sewer increase, it's gonna be about a, a little bit less than six percent increase for the, for, per month.
So, if it's normally a hundred dollars, it'd be a hundred and six dollar bill?
Yes.
Just about.
Yeah.
But your, your base rate will go up then?
Yeah, yes, it's.
Cause base rate is close to a hundred dollars now.
Yeah, it's just under ninety dollars. And, and I'm trying not to do that, adjust the base rate as much as possible because we have so many people on a fixed income. Um, but we have to adjust that one a little bit and then go up. For three thousand gallons, the change is about three percent. I'm trying to do the best I can on that, but just to cover the increase across the board.
I know, we need to keep up.
We have to do that.
I mean, you know, we can't, yeah.
So, that, that is my suggestion, I've gone through, half of this folder is numbers on water rate only. Um, because I was really trying not to go up if we didn't have to go up. It seems like a lot, but we were just behind for so many years.
If you get behind, you can hardly catch up, if you do get behind.
That's right.
Now we're the bad guys because when we finally decided to catch up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's affecting everybody really, really hard, but my, my suggestion is six, seventy cents for the residential base rate. Eighty-five cents, rate increase to per thousand after. And then we have commercial rate and those would be the same.
So you're saying, commercial would be the same?
Sewer rate. Mm-hmm. Yes, and then the sewer increase across the board, commercial and residential would be sixty-five cents for the base, which is the first two thousand gallons. And then sixty-five cents per thousand after that.
Thousand after that.
It's kinda hard to explain, but I wanna, I like to keep it as close on all rates as I can. So if that's good for y'all, then.
Cool, the first two thousand is at the base rate?
Mm-hmm.
And then per thousand after that would?
It's a little bit more, yeah.
But you, we're not adjusting the base, it's staying the same?
No, the base is going to increase by seventy cents.
Okay, because they're going up fifty cents?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Yeah.
If, if they only, if they use two thousand gallons or less, it's only gonna go up seventy cents on water. They'll go up sixty-five cents on sewer, but we average sewer once a year. So, I mean, that can fluctuate a little bit depending on how much water they use during those three months. Um, but we're trying not to go up on the, the, the people that don't ever use more than two thousand gallons if we don't have to.
Really, on average, you're looking, I mean, you're talking a couple of dollars that's going in, would increase for a water, a couple of dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not, yeah, it's, it's not a crazy amount at all.
It covers what the city, what Coors County's going up and gives us just a little.
A little more.
That we could keep.
Yeah, because the cost of everything is gonna, you know that, you know, you've felt it at home.
Sure.
It, it's happening for the city also.
Sixty-five, so, sewer that one, you said that one, that one is the average.
Yes, for residential customers, we take December, January and February. Those are the three months where homeowners use the least amount of water. We take that and average how much they use and that's the sewer charge that they're charged for a year. We do that once a year. Commercial customers, they pay their sewage based on what they use per month, but residential customers pay that one charge all year long. So, if you're using just a very little bit of water during those cold months, you're not watering your yard, you're not extra laundry and all those things, then your sewer charge is gonna be a whole lot less. So that's, that's why we take those three months and average those. And if, if we know someone's had a leak or we can see, oh, 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 this person usually uses twenty-five hundred dollars a month water and their sewer charge shouldn't be that much, we will adjust it for that usage. We don't, if you had a leak, because sometimes we do have freezes, we'll adjust it down so that it's appropriate for the usage.
Anything that shows, uh, not only isn't that.
Yes.
An oddity.
Yes, we will, we will correct it, we will try to adjust it.
Alright.
You okay with that? I mean.
Bad year, yeah. Don't see how we can not.
We gotta do, we gotta do it, we don't have a choice. I mean, we, we can't stay the same.
No.
And we needed to take the one last year, you know, we just passed on what we got at Coors County, but, you know, you're looking two years, there's a piece that'll come out. Make a motion?
I'm moving increased water and sewer, as required by the city of Coors County, for whom we purchased water.
Second. All right.
We will vote again on that in September.
Next item is discussed, consider setting a public hearing to set the tax rate for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
We have our, um, tax worksheet from Mike Gabb, um, at the no new revenue rate. If we wanted to collect the same amount that we want collected this year. I told it to you, Jeffrey, what is it? I told it to you. I think it's five.
Four nine one?
It's zero point five four nine one?
I think so.
Um, and, and the voter approval rate, anything above, above this rate, we have to have an election. But the highest we can go before having a voter to, to having an election is zero point five six.
Five six where we're at now.
Yeah, um, because we have new revenue. I don't have the worksheet right. I did all these numbers and then I didn't print the worksheet.
We had about two point three million and, uh, contested appraisals, still on the books right now. Two point thirty million contested, uh, appraisals, people that are fighting the appraisal that hadn't been settled yet. We, you'll get y'all something that says.
Uh, the no new revenue rate is zero point five four four nine. That's to collect the same amount that we are supposed to collect this year. The voter approval rate is zero point five six four one. And if we, if you vote to, um, i- if you want to go to the voter approval rate, that is going to increase our revenue about thirty-five, forty thousand dollars per year. It's not, um, crazy increase, but fuel's gone up, supplies have gone up, our employees deserve a little bit more, um, software, things like that.
The five four four nine raises the same amount?
Yep, we had adopted for this year.
How much was that amount?
How much was it?
Yeah, that's, this amount, that five four four nine.
Um, what we budgeted for, and that's a little bit, we budgeted for ninety-five percent or ninety percent of the tax rate. We budgeted for four hundred, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars.
Okay.
And if we budget at ninety-five percent at the zero point five six four one.
Be just under half a million.
Just under half a million. It's forty-eight, four, eighty-five, two, two, five. So it's about thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, just depending on how much we just collected for the year. They are looking at the legislature right now to adjust how much cities are able to increase tax rates. Again, right now, any city that's over seventy-five thousand, they're trying to adjust, instead of three and a half percent, they're wanting to only be able to adjust it two percent. I don't know when that's gonna fall down to the smaller cities, but that's what's in legislation right now.
Soon as they will get these backwards.
Well, this is just to propose a tax rate, because we have to have a public hearing on it in September. You have to set your tax rate before you can do your budget. It doesn't make sense, but that's still working.
So we were at, at the five four four nine, where we did last year?
Uh, the tax, the actual tax rate that the city charged last year was zero point five six zero one. The value increased across the board, so now to collect the same amount, it would be zero point five.
Four four.
Five four four nine?
Yeah, four four.
Five four four nine. So we would, to take the, to accept the zero point five six four.
One.
One, that is a three and a half percent increase. It, it, it's very complicated.
Five six zero one or five six nine one?
Last year was five six zero one.
But if we'd have stayed with that, we would have collected a lot. We, we, what I'm saying is this, the, the appraisals went up.
Mm-hmm.
If we would have stayed with that point five six one, we would have collected a lot of money. Thirty-five or forty thousand dollars.
Yes, you would.
Yeah.
It would be about thirty-five thousand.
But we didn't do that, we, we didn't do that. I'm talking about this year now.
If you want to, you can.
Yeah.
It's gonna be about thirty thousand more. Instead of thirty-five or forty thousand more, it's gonna be about thirty thousand more.
But I think, last year, we went to max with that, that, five six oh one was the max without a, an election.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because there's a, um, an unused portion that you can use every three years. They make this very complicated.
Yeah, it, it, it is, it gets complicated. I know, people are getting taxed to death on everything, I understand that, but, I don't know.
Should we collect extras with, the, the gas stations being, it'd be a full year?
No, not this year.
Next year.
Yeah, he was not operating for January first, so, um, which means all his abatements, uh, didn't go in till next.
Next year.
Next year.
Yeah, our taxable value went up by two and a half billion dollars this year and that's basically homes that were built.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's why the tax rate can go down a little bit because the value's gone up so much, but we would collect more even though the number's gone down. And if y'all don't wanna do six, five, six, four, one or whatever, then if there's a different number that you wanna look at, I can grab my calculator and, and run some numbers, that's not a problem. I just, that is the maximum rate we can go to without having to have an election.
The five six oh one.
Five six four one.
Five six four one.
Four one.
Four one.
So we, we, we have to be somewhere between five four four nine and five six four one?
Yes, sir.
Is where we gotta be.
Mm-hmm.
And we're currently at five six oh one.
Mm-hmm. It, it, it's a confusing, there are eighty-eight steps to calculate a tax rate.
Yeah, that.
And it, it shouldn't be. And then they don't even tell me how much it changes, I have to figure that out myself.
Oh, no, no, no.
The more they try to simplify it, the more confusing it gets. Half that rate, half the increase between the five six oh one and five four four nine and make it five five two five.
About twenty thousand dollars a year? And that, that's basically kind of the increase that we've looked at the last several years is between twenty and forty thousand dollars. Because if people pay their taxes early, they get that, we are the only people that allow the discount in the county. And people do take advantage of that, um.
And I don't.
They do that.
It's not.
I mean, it's three percent, two percent, one percent, but people appreciate that, they really do.
Just about every city has dropped it.
Yes, we are the only ones in the Verre County that do it still.
That do what? Early pay discount?
Early pay discount, if you pay in October, you get a three percent discount, November, you get a two percent discount, December, you get a one percent discount. Nobody else does it. And I don't know if people even know about that. I didn't until I was in here. If you don't have a mortgage company, basically, you probably don't know about it.
Well, it's kinda, kinda like y'all was kinda thinking somewhere in the middle. Well, it's kinda like, I was kinda thinking somewhere in the middle splitting, splitting the difference there somewhere.
What is the middle? What's the middle?
Five five two five.
Let's go with that.
Roughly.
Let's go there.
Wait, I thought that we were doing five six oh one now.
Well.
Or are we doing five four four nine now?
No, we're doing five six nine one now.
So, no.
Five six oh one.
So you're going down?
So.
Okay.
But our values.
But the values went up.
Okay, okay, got it, got it. Five five two five, got it, got it caught up. God, I got a headache now.
It's saving the tax people some money, but it's not saving the city any.
Uh-uh.
I mean, you know, that's what it would fall down to.
We'll have to adjust something in terms, in other areas, if you don't.
You know.
If we don't do that. So you're talking about five, five two five?
Is that, I know they gave us examples of that.
No, they don't.
They don't?
That's what I asked for. I asked, and asked, and asked. Um, I mean, I can go up and look at it and, and see. I just took what we are supposed to collect for this year times three and a half percent, and that equals five hundred and ten thousand and some change, times ninety percent would be four hundred eighty-five thousand, which is, that's at the five six four nine. And that's roughly forty thousand per open budget.
I, uh, going up on water rates, I sure would keep that tax rate, try to decrease it.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand.
Make to go, yeah, on the water and the sewer and the taxes too, so I don't know, uh, uh.
I mean.
It's a hard thing to do. Nobody likes an increase on their, their paper anything, but.
We're not. Actually setting the tax rate.
No, this is proposing the tax rate that I have to publish in the paper.
Well, what proposal?
You have to propose an actual number tonight.
So that would be a little over one and three quarter percent increase, if we set in five five two five.
I believe so.
No, decrease, increase or decrease, cause it's in the middle.
It's gonna be an increase. Because anything above five four four nine is an increase.
Yeah, it's gonna be an increase, yes.
Yeah. If it's not five four four nine, it's an increase in taxes, in the tax rate.
Yeah.
Um, five five two five?
Of course, when you said you was at five six oh one.
That's what we, that's what it's for this year.
Yeah, five six.
But the rates went up, so we're trying to adjust down.
Values went up, so tax rate is gone down, but to collect the same amount, your tax rate has to adjust. If value goes up, tax rate goes down. It's like a seesaw effect.
I like the five five two five.
That's an increase, but not maximum.
For somebody's. For somebody's valuation, as rare as they are, didn't go up, you know, they're getting a break. See what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, easiest way to do this, took a hundred thousand dollar home and then broke it down by that to
Yeah.
see what the tax would be.
Boy, you think I can, Brian, well.
Uh, I was, I was somewhere in the middle there.
Yeah.
Kinda tried to kinda.
That's right, I wrecked in the middle.
Yeah.
I hit you in the middle.
Gives us a small increase.
We can't stay where we are. We can't.
No, sir.
We got to survive.
A- a- and just that, halving that increase is gonna make us have to adjust on several different things.
Somewhere on the, in the budget somewhere, yeah.
It's gonna make us have to adjust in a lot of different areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, five five two five, I would
So, so um, is that need, I guess, is that needy day?
Yeah, I mean, the motion to propose, yep.
I make a motion, we go with five five two five.
Go second, I'll in third.
Gotcha. I'll put it on for the next meeting to have a public hearing on that, and then you'll vote to approve it and adopt it with water and sewer rates.
City has to survive just like everybody else. It's not our money we're spending. But we still gotta survive.
And you have to run it like a business. Can't go broke, stay in business.
All right, next I was discussing budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
May wanna go back to tax rate after we talk about this. We've had a lot of things to go up. We, um, past, um, issues has caused our property insurance, our property insurance will be increasing significantly over the next six months to a year. It will affect this budget cycle, but I don't know how much, because we had a lot of different properties that were not covered under the policy. T M L says we have to have every building, every structure on the policy, every item, as far as equipment, brush hog, tractor, every single item has to be included, written in the policy, or it's not covered. When we had this hailstorm, we realized that we had several things that were just not covered, that weren't on the policy as far as buildings at the towers or the lift stations and things like that, and Jeffrey can go over it with you. He went out with the adjuster. We have to add all of those things. That's gonna increase our insurance significantly. I don't know yet how much that's gonna affect us. Those numbers will go up from what this is paid for.
Tony's this, but not. I have a, actually a meeting tomorrow with our regional, whatever it is, insurance from T M L, to go around, look at these buildings and make sure everything's covered. The one big building from the hailstorm that wasn't covered was the daycare.
Was the what?
Daycare.
Oh.
I'm, I'm guessing probably
Oh. It wasn't on.
Thirty-five years ago, it probably was on the policy when it was headstall. But that building sat empty twenty years. And probably during that twenty years, we weren't using it, we probably dropped. Can't find it, don't know, nobody has records back that far. But it did get significant hail damage. Roof needs to be replaced. The T M L underwriters have agreed to include it and uh, allow the claim. But we're going to go back and base back insurance on it, coverage, uh, to get it into there. Which will be, you would consider that daycare a very small part. Most of the other roofs that this first adjuster had, since we had all this damage, it's all cosmetic. Metal roof, it's all cosmetic. And they sent, they have a company that they partner with that, uh, they do, they find the contractors to do the work. They did the roofing on the daycare, which turned out to be a horrible mess. When this guy was here, he called guy, the contractor, and said, you won't work for us anymore.
Wow.
But they I like it, but I don't like, cause people doing cost plus ten or twelve percent, so you're basically getting what you pay for. This, I'm carrying, I'm gonna carry this guy around tomorrow. We're going to every structure we have, lift station, water towers, everything, city barns, storage buildings, sewer plant, and make sure everything is on the policy. Cause that's, one unknown is that daycare and that roof and what it's gonna cost. But I'm, as old as that roof is, I know that I could pay a hundred percent of it. But there's other damage that siding, vinyl siding, had holes in it from the hail, so but it's hard to budget for that, because we don't know.
Um, again, um, according to Tony Kuda, who's our software guy, um, our computers need to be updated. I don't, it's been six, six years that we've had, that the office has had these computers. Um, he said that it is time for us to purchase new computers for the office. Um, I believe that he was talking about next year, purchasing new computers for the police department. I'm not a hundred percent on that. Um, I'm not sure the cost of that, but I put four thousand dollars down for that, and that's kinda, I think that's a high number, on the high end, but that covers all the computers that we need for here. Last time, uh, at the last meeting, we did talk about the water, um, software. Um, that would be updating the water software to integrate with the general ledger accounts payable software. Um, there are many perks to that, being able to look at your bill online, being able to pay your bill online. Through that software, you'd see how much you need to pay. That's gonna be a pretty penny. It's about sixteen thousand dollars for the first year and about eight thousand dollars per year after that. Um, I'm trying to talk to them and see if they would lock in that price for ten years and say, okay, we're not gonna go up on you until year ten, because that is a big price and that's a big thing, but it is going to be bringing us into the current century on our water software. Um, and so I, I've kind of included those numbers in it. Um.
That eight thousand include updates.
Mm-hmm.
Along the way.
Includes, um.
It, it's also compatible with the self reading water, water meters.
Yes, if we wanna go out for a grant to get the meters where the radio meters, where you just drive down the road and it picks up the reading, it will, it's compatible with that. And if, um, one thing that's included in that that I really, really love and Maria is excited about is bills are due on the tenth. People forget. Cut off is the twentieth. People forget. On the eighteenth, she can tell the system to send out a text to everybody that hasn't paid their water bill yet and say, hey, don't forget, your bill is due on, cutoff is the twentieth, and it sends them a reminder.
Text and email with?
Yes, they will text and email. It's a, it is a, a very.
I hate that when I get from eighteen P L myself.
I mean, people, but people forget about their water bill, and it, it's horrible, cause they get home from work at five thirty and then their water's off and they just have to wait till the next day, but if they get a reminder two or three days before, then it may help them to, to get it taken care of.
Yeah, just two months ago, I didn't get a bill, and I've forgotten about it. It went, you know, I was paying bills next month, you know, I didn't work, I didn't have a write a check, see the card, so I had to pay the ten dollars cost of it.
It, it's horrible. It, it's crazy, but, um.
A water bill.
The, one other thing about it, wouldn't they, don't they do the billing and they s- they do the billing, the mailings?
Right now, for us to mail out water bills, we pay a permit to the postmaster every year. Right now, it's three hundred and fifty or four hundred dollars, I'm not sure. Then every month, we pay postage, which is, it's going up, so it's about three hundred dollars a month. This software program, Maria would put in all the meters, create a file, send it to a company. They would proof it, send her a proof back. She would go over and look at it and say, yes, it's good. They mail out the water bills. Because it's a third party and they do so many mailouts, their postage is cheaper than what we would be paying for our permit and our postage every month. Then we wouldn't have to print six hundred water bills every month. That means our, our, our printing costs are gonna go down. We're not gonna have to purchase the paper cards for, to print our own. It's not gonna cost, it's not gonna take so much time with Maria going over and looking at them and making sure that they're in order, getting the costs together, so we would have to make another check to another person, but when you look at the whole scheme of things, it's cheaper than what we're paying now, per month.
And now your water bill can get lost from somewhere else.
Yeah, it's not us anymore. But I mean, it, it's a great program, and if it's, um, if you have a high usage, when you go online and look, you can look at your own usage. You don't have to call here anymore. You don't have to talk to Maria and, and have us try to explain it to you. You can look at it yourself. That's a big deal. I mean, that's, that's what people wanna see now. So.
Do, does this company for over the phone, online payments still charge three percent?
I'm not sure. There is a charge, but I don't know what it is. Um, and that's because if the customer doesn't pay it, we would have to eat it.
Yeah.
And i- i- if the customer's willing to pay that, that they can look up and say, oh, my ticket's two hundred and fifty dollars and pay it, and they're willing to, I'd say let the, the customer pay it. We do offer the draft program. Will it comes, when it comes out of their account, if they don't wanna pay that fee, then that is something that we do offer.
That will be handled by the third party company?
The drafting? No, that's something that we will do. We will still do that, and
That's better.
Honestly, um, over the past five years, we have had so many customers sign up for the draft program. Um, that means that people don't pay their water bill late anymore. If you look at your water report, the, the late fees that we collect are going down. That's a good thing, and it's a bad thing, because our numbers are going down, but in the last three years, I've had to increase our rate to, um, do A C H payments from nine thousand dollars a month. Now we are doing sixteen thousand dollars a month, and I just increased it this month to seventeen thousand dollars, because he couldn't do it. That's because people are wanting to be part of the draft program. They're paying their bills on time. We're collecting more. A- a- and if they wanna do that and not pay the extra fee, then that's great. If they wanna pay that percentage, if they're not able to do the draft program, then I'm sorry, but that's, that's kind of just how it is. But that water program is, it would self-integrate and communicate with my, my, uh, accounting program. It, it talks to the court program, and eventually, I'd love in the, in the future to do permits and code enforcement. It's got so many different aspects to it, but water is the next thing that we need to add to it. Um, and I have talked to them. If we sign up for it and say yes. Um, and I have talked to them, if we sign up for it and say, yes, this is what we want, they have such a backup that we wouldn't even be able to. They would start working on us after January one.
Wow. That's how.
They'd say yes quick.
That's how far, you know, they, the backlog is on it. But I'm excited about that because it's gonna bring us into a much better place than what we are now. The program that we use gets the job done, but it is working in the nineteen eighties. Okay, then my next thing. This, this really, um, i- i- it is a police department thing. Um, for the code enforcement. Demo, mowing, line item. This is so that when we, um, demolish a house, when we have mowing done on a lot because of code enforcement issues, that. When we put a lien on someone's house and in ten years, twenty years, when I'm not here. They know where to put that lien because it would go back to the police department. Right now, um, our maintenance guys do it and it. If, if it's not me looking at it, then they don't know, oh, that goes to streets or, oh, that goes to water and sewer because they're the ones who did the work on it. Um, we have that line item. When that property sells, that money's gonna go back into the police department budget as revenue paid back to them. So my suggestion is to do a line item for that and, and because it's kinda new, I don't know how much it needs to be.
Well, we ran into issues this year having Tim, Tim mow because it backed up some pretty good deals, but.
Yeah, um.
We need somebody.
Then you.
Also talked about if we're gonna actually have Tim re-mow these lots or is the city guys gonna do it? Because these lots that we've had him clean up already, and obviously them guys are busy, but they're grown up again, so I don't know what we need to do.
Yeah, I told them, um.
Well, I mean, no, that's.
And, and you just.
They're just busy, I get it.
What I put on preliminary numbers was five thousand for that. Just depending on, I mean, the year, I mean, there may be a couple of houses tear down, there may be a couple of lots to mow two or three times. It just kinda depends on the year and what, what Bobby's going, what he's got going on. And then, um, we had discussed translator expenses. There's a lot of times that the police department needs a tra- translator for sensitive things, for cases. Or whatever, if you wanna explain that, you can.
Obviously, we run across issues, but we need a translator a lot of times when you tell the sheriff department, there's nobody available, but they're, or they're tied up and they can't help us. Maria's helped us many times, late at night, here and there. Uh, I've had her sign a, not too long ago, had her sign an N D A, uh, pretty lengthy one and, you know, just saying anything she may hear. Be involved with, she can't repeat it or anything like that, but it's, uh, she's a credible asset, especially late at night, I, I used her a couple of weeks ago on, on the incident where. I got called out and Thomas had several Hispanics out there with him, couldn't talk English, it got pretty rowdy, that's why I got called out. Uh, I called Maria, she answered the phone, it took me a while to get hold of, but she answered. She, she's important, I don't, you know, we got, school I got covered, I got several at school already, but here I just don't have any. Other than her, and then like I said, sheriff department, when you call to use them, they're, they're tied up in jail or something like that, it's, it's kind of that.
Um, I have talked to Maria and she has said, yes, she would do it. There are several ways that translators can charge, it can be by the, you know, quarter hour, by the occurrence, by the month. They can charge you several different ways. And in my opinion, the best way to pay her would be by month. And my suggestion is to pay her three hundred dollars a month in addition to whatever she makes taking care of water and sewer, um. Because translators alone get paid fifty thousand plus in a year. And, um, and allow her a city phone because she's gonna be.
Right.
On call.
And I already have a phone, I keep an extra line on our field, regardless, and it's just it.
Um.
That, this kinda brings up an interesting question. We switch our water bills over, she's gonna have more free time, isn't she? If we go with this new software?
Uh, I'm not sure.
That would, uh, to me, that would be up to you to give her some more duties and take some off you.
She does a lot with permits and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably heavier into permitting and.
She does a lot with that and she explains, there's, there's a lot of contractors that are Spanish only in speaking. And she does a lot of that already and, and she is more than willing to take over permits. The only reason why I don't give it all to her is because I have to put them in a computer. Otherwise, she is a hundred percent. She just asks me questions, hey, if they need this, what do you need, if they need this, what do you gotta have? Um, but other than that, she's got it, she's, she's doing it. Um. She takes care of a lot of that and if, if they call for inspection and I say, hey, tell them to call Sydney for inspection. And she hasn't heard from him, she asks me and then she keeps a note to call him and double check. And if they need their electricity cleared, she knows how to do that, she knows how to, if I haven't cleared it, then she'll do it. Um. She'll do everything and she helps with citations a lot. If there's Spanish speaking people that receive citations, she goes over the brochure, she has translated that and they have. The officers have Spanish brochures to give to them so that they can understand that and when they call, she will go over with them. But she's an asset that I don't wanna lose.
Yeah, she sounds so indispensable.
She likes it here.
She does and she, she has options, so, um, I, I, just think about that, that's something that we, that I have a line item in the budget for and that comes down to about three thousand dollars a year. Um.
For her?
Yes.
About thirty-six hundred a year.
Um.
Three hundred a month, thirty-six hundred.
Well, what I did is I did three hundred a month and then. About a fifty, because each phone costs thirty-five, forty, fifty dollars a month, just depending on how it works out. And then she would get two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
She would do what?
She would actually receive two hundred and fifty dollars a month. Because her phone allowance is in that three hundred also.
Oh, okay, I didn't know about phone allowance, okay, well, city paid for that.
Yeah. The city would pay for it, but. It's, it's part of the pa- package, I guess.
Two hundred and fifty a month on a phone.
Two hundred and fifty a month and a phone.
Okay.
Okay.
I know that she don't work for me, but. People like her that's worked somewhere and does translate for, you know, for whoever comes in, they're, you know what, you normally see a three, four dollar an hour bumping or pay on stuff like that. Three hundred a month plus a phone, and we got the phone anyway, it's thirty-nine bucks a month, so, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have twenty-one phones, phone lines that we pay for, so there's, there's plenty of extras.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, you know.
Okay. Okay, well, I will make sure that that is taken care of in the budget for, for, for that. There's only a handful of things that I don't have, you know, truly accounted for, um.
Something also, I imagine we can't do it this year, but something we really need to do is, uh, is get our T M L stuff where, where we have a, an officer or something comes in. Their prior military service accounts, that's a big deal, uh, I've kinda called around and there's nobody that doesn't recognize military service. I don't know what kind of increase that is on us, but, uh, we need to, that, that was one, one of the contributing factors for Terry applying for other jobs. He said, I can work five years and retire, you know, and Thomas has brought that up too, you know, he's, he's ex-military, so that's something I think about. I don't know what kind of increase that is.
Well, having, having, what you're saying is having their military time.
Shared time.
Would count towards their service time.
Yeah, counts towards their service time, of course, so they can retire.
Yes, for the T M R is retired. I don't know with that.
Well, it's, it's just something I, I was gonna bring up, but.
If we do that, then they can retire.
I ain't going to, I mean, you got Terry, he's sixty year up, sixty years old, you know, he's. He's just thinking, hey, I get it, there's something to evolve, everybody has this, I don't, I don't really understand why we don't have it.
Um, as far as water and sewer, they haven't asked for anything. Major this year, nobody has, you know, I think that they're. Taking care of, we did get this, the electric eel, that sewer machine, it did come in, um, so they have that. I don't think that they have, I don't think they've asked for anything specific, anything major, anything big.
Not, not in water and sewer, we, we talked about buying a limb saw to go on the, uh, skid steer. Uh, and I hadn't looked to see if this place is on the. What, uh, was it serve?
Source well?
Source well. But their online price was about seven thousand dollars for an ag, ag grade, so it must mean it must be industrial. Their commercial sizes get up to twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, which, you know, we're not talking about something we're gonna be using every day either.
But for the cost of what we get, we rent a lift.
Yeah, it, it actually is cheaper than.
Paid for itself, really.
What, two weeks of a lift, that's about eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, roughly, yeah. It's gone up a lot recently.
It's slow.
Yeah.
Um, they haven't asked for much, so, you know, their budget's not gonna be extreme. I, we did talk about, you know, personnel raises and things, I think that, that the chief and I both agree that. Across the board, two dollars an hour would be great, we could do that for everyone, um, just so that they can. Kinda keep up with the increase, you know.
I, I did a little research on salaries and. Of course. Social Security gives you, is giving a two and a half percent cost of living adjustment. Uh, actual corporate wages, this is their estimate from this, I looked at a couple of websites, they were pretty close. Uh, corporate salaries above sixty thousand, we're expecting a three and a half percent. Cost of living increase in salaries. So you just take sixty thousand dollars at three and a half percent. About eight, about twenty-eighteen hundred, two thousand. Yeah, and you go back and figure it, it actually works out to about a dollar an hour. Uh, on the corporate side, now, the actual, of course, they said last night wages are increasing on the news. But what I read, which was a couple of months old, they were decreasing. Were not, they were not projected to, um, go as high as corporate wages, of course, hourly wages. But they were still around thirty percent.
Yeah, I, I pretty well agree with three and a half percent raise, except for the police. I'd like to see them get two dollars an hour, across the board, everybody else three and a half. And another thing is. Reason being, and I'm not, I know they, everybody does their job and stuff. But I've done some research with Course County and other cities, same workers. Our workers are making more than they're making. Equipment operator in Course County, twenty-seven dollar an hour.
But how long has he been there?
I can look it up on my phone.
You're, you're Marcus Mondo.
I, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Tenure, I would say.
I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody's work. I'm just saying. I know that our people have gotten some good raises beforehand. They got COVID money also. And I don't know how much paid time off that we pay them. I don't know how much vacation, paid vacation time everybody has. That needs to get added in too, plus pay everybody's insurance. Uh. That's a big plus.
And retire.
That's a thousand dollars a month.
They retire, we may as well retire.
Yeah. But I, and I'm not, I'm not taking away, I'm just expressing what I feel.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's, it's like I said earlier, you know, it's not our money we're spending, it's the city's money.
I know.
And the taxpayers' money.
Yes, and that's who I work for, the taxpayers.
Right, and, you know, with the. All of us, everything more expensive for all of us. And, you know, we're, you gotta find that balance, of course, you know, we have no set system, merit system. Tenure or whatever. As far as setting raises, you know, we never have. So, you know, have you based that in a small city? Now, I could not find anything on city, uh, Texas city increases.
I have some stuff. I do, as far as city secretary in, in my job, I do have some stuff. Um, I can honestly tell you that you can't find a, a water maintenance supervisor to do what Marcus does for what he's paid and plus what he does. Um, y- he does the work of three people and then. I don't think you could find anyone that would do what Armando does for the, what he's paid. At twenty-seven dollars an hour to come here, um, insurance paid or not. Um, I think we're very lucky to have people that we have right now.
Oh, I'm not, I, I agree, we are.
And, and that, that third year, um, we don't have a high turnover rate, but, um. We just gotta remember to take, to make sure that we appreciate them, we value them, they do need to hire someone else in that department. And you need to hire someone to be training for supervisor position. Marcus will be retiring, he's already made it known, very known, I've said it.
Plan.
For four years, he's retiring as soon as he's eligible for retirement. And that's coming up very quickly. Um. So have that in your, on, on your plate for, for budget and things like that, because if you want someone to have that knowledge, you need to hire them now because it won't be available whenever he's retired.
Well, and Armando's looking to retire too, isn't he?
They will leave at the same time, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we do need to start training someone to be as knowledgeable as they are, he is, yeah.
I mean, they both know where everything's at, how to work everything, um, and if you don't have someone that's willing to do that and know those things and willing to learn those things. Then we're gonna, the city is going to be in a major, major bind when they retire.
Well, even three and a half percent, I figured it, it may be around two dollars an hour for her, I don't know.
Sixty, sixty thousand, so you can figure that's about a dollar, I think it was ninety-eight cents, but a dollar.
Say what now, say that again. It's sixty thousand dollars, that three percent interest is a dollar eighty an hour.
Two dollars an hour is two thousand eighty dollars a year.
Yeah.
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 No, four thousand.
Four thousand, two eighty is one dollar an hour. I don't have it right on top of my head. What I, what I have budgeted, I think, is two dollars an hour across the board.
Twenty one hundred dollars for sixty thousand dollar employee.
Back to three and a half percent, yeah, not three, yeah, three and a half, yeah.
But you also have some. Two office employees. Which I don't know, I don't know if her would be being here.
Um, she's been here about a year and a half, you know, probably about a year and a half.
Last year. What about in, uh. General fund, I mean, is there any other expenses? What about police department?
Um, one thing that I didn't have a line on for was the, the license plate reader subscription and then.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do that, it's not doing what I was hoping it would do. We're gonna cancel out our trial, Natalie and Seth Cameron were there.
Okay.
It's, uh, they have it, got their little TCIC integrated in there where we can get kids on, no insurance or no license plate stuff, so they. They keep avoiding me on that, because I keep saying that it was there, but it is picking up some big stuff, you know, but, I mean, really, my point is, I was hoping to pay for themselves, that's what I was trying to do.
Okay.
But I don't want it, I'm not doing it.
I, I, I had that highlighted because I couldn't remember how much it was gonna cost, and then.
Three thousand a year.
And then we have the. The, what's the in car care system, twenty thousand a year?
No, it's ten. Nine, ten, ten thousand, no, it's fifteen thousand, I can't remember, I haven't seen one.
Okay, I can't remember what it was, but I, that's one number that I need to get figured out, that, those two were the two that I could think of for that. And that's it, really. Electricity won't go up this year, but next year be prepared, because it's going up by over a hundred percent.
I need to make sure, we got a big training cycle coming up this next year, and I need to be sure we got, you know, I'll go into my app bigger and I, we need about six thousand in that training. It's a big training year to end, the guys got some mandated stuff they got to go to, I've got two, we've gone, once I got to have.
The ordinance rewrite.
I don't know.
That's, uh, Natalie's got the deal, they sent it in, it, it, they took what we had and made it look all pretty, but it's still what I sent them, but it's all organized. I just, yesterday, they got the sheet that we, that I gotta work off of, I got the.
Well, I was just wondering if we had it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sitting down Thursday with Natalie with that sheet.
Budgeting, just budgeting, the money budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to look at it, because I don't remember, oh, glad you said that, because I don't remember what those costs were, I know I have a lot of notes, but.
Like thirty five hundred dollars, thirty five hundred dollars.
A year, the yearly, and the initial was.
Yeah. Five hundred, was it five hundred something? I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head. Because they did it for seven thousand.
Yeah, seven thousand, in the yearly was.
Five hundred, yeah. Because right now, I, I believe. You know, we owe half of that thirty five, or that, half of seventy five.
But that's about all I have, um. Uh, electricity, we did sign a new electricity contract. Right now, we're paying about four point eight percent in twenty twenty six, for the, for five years after that, Luke will be paying.
Seven ninety?
Yeah, it, it is doubling.
It, it's, it's gonna go more than that.
I got one more thing, I, this is really not that big a deal, but, uh, we've got to do something with our internet next year, it is not doing what we need to do.
The what internet?
Our internet, I'm sorry, my phone.
Yeah, y'all, are we having problems here?
It's, uh, our upload speed is four over there, and that, and our, where, where we upload our cases, they said you need at least a fifteen. We're sitting, I mean, because once you can't just upload a case and walk away when it uploads.
Something's happened to him in the last couple months.
I mentioned that, that mine at home never has any problem, I couldn't do anything.
But then it starts over, if you walk away from it, then something messes up.
It actually lasts, uh.
We don't have any troubles here, but we don't upload like that, yeah, we don't upload.
Download, yeah, yeah. That's our biggest deal, the download's fine.
I don't, I don't know if it's something to do, they're supposed to, supposedly gonna start moving this stuff back to the water tower. But the guy kind of, when I told him, I talked to him, yeah, a month ago, when we got the logo painted. You know, I said, you know, y'all can, but their agreement with the county wasn't but for six months, so they're eight months in right now, nine months in. To get stuff off their tower, they may have worked out a deal with the county, to leave it on there, I don't know, I had heard from him. But he said there would be probably some new equipment that they would install, mine's horrible at home. Actually, I don't have any cell phone coverage, I don't have any internet, so.
Mine goes down about this time, it just slows down a bit.
You know, the curious thing would be, you know, if we hold on long enough to see how expensive this fiber optic's gonna be from Brightspeed. Which, yeah, I was here, the gesture guy was bragging on Starlink, it is expensive. Anything else on budget?
No, I don't have anything else. I'll get these numbers to you and I'll email, I'll email a preliminary to you, so you can look at it. With, with those updates, with the ordinance, the, if, if, Roy, if you find out any in, internet people that are super cheap or that will do us the municipal rate or anything, let me know.
It's not just one prank enough, obviously, I know we get free internet, but it is killing us.
And actually, Rise Broadband has canceled their agreement with us, they were on the North Tower, they're gone, they're done.
Yeah, they said that they didn't have the customers here to keep it, Rise Broadband.
Used to be Internet America. Uh, all right, anything else on budget, if not, let's go to operations and go home. Code enforcement, you got your report?
Have any concerns about tall grass, I've, I've, I've been working on that myself, it's, uh, so if y'all have any. Curious about any properties, I can usually convince the owner just to get it done without going through a bunch of procedures.
Only complaint I have about code enforcement and if not Bobby Lee, it's, it's something we need to do something different. People put their couches and chairs and coffee tables and mattresses out in the lawn. But they don't call Republic, well, it sits there for two, three months. We need to do something different, I don't know what, but you can't make the people, they're not gonna call Republic, so do we give the people that set the stuff out there a fine? Or, or does, do we get Bobby Lee to call Republic to pick it up, and we've talked about this before, but.
Or you get Republic to pick it up when they say they're going to.
Do what?
You get Republic to do their job.
This is.
I have called Republic and asked them, and I put out a sofa the night before. And they didn't come, and I called that day and I said, are you coming? And she said, we should be there by six, they didn't come, Friday I called, they said they weren't gonna be able to get back to me until Monday, so Republic needs to do something too.
That is a big thing, Bobby Lee and I have talked about this.
Okay.
There are times that I drive through the neighborhoods, and I know all these addresses off the top of my head, and I'm like, One Hundred Daniels needs a mattress picked up, or blah, 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 or blah, blah, blah. I do send Republic an email almost every month with a list of places, and if they don't pick it up. Next month, whenever I send them, I'll highlight that one and say, you didn't pick this up last month.
Okay, well, I didn't know, I didn't know we were doing that.
I do that. And Bobby Lee, Bobby Lee and I have talked about it, and I'm like, hey Bobby, if you see any place that's like that, he's really good about taking pictures. And he'll take a picture of it and send it to me in email and say, hey, One Hundred Daniels Drive has a couch out there, can you add this to your Republic list? So, he's working with me, and, and I tell him, he's like, is this already on your list, and I'm like, I tell him, yes, I have it. Republic does not wanna pick up anything that's been sitting out in the rain, and people don't understand that, they don't wanna pick up a mattress that's been sitting out there for three weeks getting rained on, and it's horrible to deal with.
Yeah.
Um, but, if Republic, if you see something that's been out there for that long and Republic hasn't picked it up, by all means, give me the call, and I'll call Republic and they'll come pick it up.
That nearby Jim and Glenn, across from Roy, Cattie Corner, they're piled out there every month, stays there all month.
Well, the one.
Two eleven, two eleven Southeast Third, they were on my list for the last two times.
The mattress lady out there.
Uh, they've been on my list the last two times. Yeah, I, I am calling them, but, hey, if you see it, call me or email me, and I will, more than, I don't have a problem at all letting them know that they need to come back over here and do their job.
I didn't know they weren't doing their job, I mean, you know, that's how we get things talked out, but, and I've had complaints, it's not just me complaining about it.
Yeah, yeah. I, I understand.
People have said, hey, why is that still sitting there, I said, look, and I told them, like, the, the people sat it out there, supposed to call Republic, Republic supposed to pick it up. And they said, well, if it's sat there for two or three months, why don't the city do something about it, and I said, look, we'll discuss it at the meeting, so that's, I'm doing it.
No problem, there was a mattress that sat on, on Bazet Road for months and months and months and months, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about, people called and they complained about it and everything, and finally I called and.
And it's the same houses that leave the joint out there thirty days.
Yes.
I don't care, Republic might pick it up one day, but they got something new to put out there next day, and it sits out there all month.
Yes. And Republic, if it's got twigs in it, like brush, Republic will not go near it because it looks like brush.
Yeah.
If, if they can avoid it, they're gonna avoid it, so then, if, if there's somebody that has it kinda like that, I don't know if that house, Cattie Corner from Roy is like that, I haven't paid attention to it. But I'll have Maria call them and let them know that Republic won't pick up their bulk if it's brush and.
Right, yeah.
Items to pick up, um, so you need to split that, like, if you have brush to pick up, our guys will come and pick it up, that's not a problem, they just can't be in the same pile. Because we won't pick it up because it's got crap in it, and they won't pick it up because it's got brush in it. Um, and she, she'll call them and tell them, and if you see it, let me know, I'll email, I like to email them so that I have my paper trail.
Yeah, yeah.
And proof that I did email them, and it's not just a phone call.
Anything else on code enforcement?
Sorry, hit me to get on, get on Fox about that, it, it drives me crazy too.
Oh, that, I hate it.
It drives me crazy.
And like I say, there's four or five houses.
Oh, yeah, there's several in purpose.
I, I like to do it about the last week of the month, and, and I make a big list and, and send it to them, and just driving my kids to school, I remember the address, five oh four South Humphreysneeks, be picked up.
Across from, it was on, on, can't work for sure. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, something new out there every day, uh.
I could say something to you.
Um, water department.
Uh, our loss looks better, we are working on that, um, we were hoping that it would be completely worked out this month, remember last month, it showed that we gained a little bit of water? Between last month, this month, and the upcoming month, it should be completely worked out, but we've been working on that, that's been an interesting thing.
Sewer department.
I don't have anything new on sewer.
Street, patching pothole, wanna get some asphalt. Police department.
We had twenty seven, uh, report, were the offenses or incidents. We have two major felon cases, we all, we cleared those by, with arrest, one was four three, also wound up turning into counterfeiting, and the other one was a, uh, theft. Arrested the rest, and we had, uh, four other, four other arrests, they were public intoxication, criminal mischief. And just regular warrant service.
Animal control.
No comment, I don't know what to say, I don't have nowhere to take them, or we don't. I did one place in Dallas that, that taken, but. Talk about somebody being out of town for hours, you know.
Yeah, three or four hours here, they're gone. Court.
Okay, let me tell you, Terry Jackson gets the gold star for July. He has, he has gone above and beyond, and he's done a lot of traffic, phew, there were a total of two hundred fifty three citations issued. Two hundred fifty three, it's been a long time since I've seen a number like that, I'm, I'm so proud, but, um, Terry has done a great job, I know he's done. A lot of them, I don't, I know the other guys are doing it too, but I know that Terry's very proud of that, um, so there's been a lot of citations issued this month.
There's driving force behind that.
Yeah, Terry has been pushing at it, like, he has been like, look at this, look at this, every time he comes in and brings citations, he's so excited, so I tell you, give him a gold star. And, and, and she has court tomorrow, that's all I have to report for court, but I'm proud of Terry, and I'm proud that he's proud.
Thanks, Department.
Oh, we are at ninety four point five percent collected. Sounds good.
Hope you looked at your email on our sales tax receipts, did y'all look at that, when Catherine sent out?
I didn't even look at it, I just forwarded it, I didn't even look this time, I was at home.
Let's see, I believe we're about eighty thousand dollars right now short, unfortunately, while last year, four months left, calendar year. We collected thirty five thousand this month. So, our sales tax, we're set.
Thirty five, seven, 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 for August.
Pam, what was it last year?
Twenty one, seven, eighty three.
Yeah, I figured this out. We're at two hundred and twenty eight thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars right now, last year we collected two hundred and fifty three thousand.
You said that four months ago.
So.
I like that, that report, the way how it's laid out, gives you month by month, and I think it's got like ten years or something on it, it's got a lot.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, oh six, oh six to twenty five.
Yeah, oh wow, twenty.
Yeah, it, uh, fantastic. Uh, office?
We had to close our office last week, I don't know what to do. We had a lot of issues, but it is fixed. They added a new return vent, we had all the water damage, um, new insulation, we had six inch insulation up there, now we have ten inch, all the ducts have been replaced, today has been great, um, we did have a couple of issues of condensation from the ducts, so I had, when Daniel came in today, I said, get up there and circle them like you do a spider web, and if they get bigger, we know that we're growing.
There's a distribution box, basically, right here.
Yeah.
Where the main vent from the air conditioner, then it goes, and it's got condensation, some reason. It's supposed to be insulated on the inside, but I think he came back yesterday insulated on the outside too. Uh, one other thing we are gonna do, we're gonna buy a couple of dehumidifiers to put in here to try to dry this air out, so I don't know why it's here, unless we're getting some heat from next door, more added heat. Now, there's fire breaks in between the walls, so we shouldn't be. We're gonna do that, we also gonna have, uh, vents installed in the room.
We can tell the difference today, just today alone, it, it's been a whole.
We're still, still humid in here, but that's, I can still feel the humidity, and it's cool, it's cool, but it's still, so we'll probably buy, spend a couple hundred dollars on humidifiers and, um, set them up and see if that'll make a difference. Grants.
They still hanging down there, up there?
They are through painting the north tower. Uh, Loopy, the painter, called me today. I am not happy with the paint job. They painted that whole tower with rubbish.
I'm rolling the legs one day.
They did not spray any of that on the outside at all, and streaky, some of it looks like they didn't even cover the, the primer, it's a green primer. Uh, I'm, I'll have a talk with the engineer tomorrow, uh, on the project. Notice we've got a fence up at the south tower, only thing we like there is they got a poor concrete splash pad. They, they will be taking the outriggers off the tank, uh, north tower, for the curtain. I, I'm just not happy with the paint. Now, I know they sprayed it in some, uh, but, and, um, with the engineer, we'll get, uh, valve company scheduled to get here, uh, replace the backflow or check valve, which happened, didn't work at all up there, and redo the diaphragm valve. They were supposed to have the parts ordered, I think the check valve, they ordered both of them, but I'm ready to be done. But I, I told him, I told the contractor at the tower, I didn't want the valve people here to lay all those outriggers off. And I said, and you're not paying, they came and worked on these other valve, they got paint on their vehicles, brand new vehicles. So Maguire had to pay, Maguire, the con- main contractor, had to pay to get those vehicles cleaned. I, I have, I have not impressed with Maguire, I'm watching their subcontractors, this has been horrible, this should have been a whole lot easier job. That's all I got, uh, and Catherine had talked to Ken with public management, does our grants. And we may not be as bad on the list for the next round of grants we think we are. So sewer plants next.
Yeah, you know, if we don't, if we don't go out and apply, we can't get it in at all.
Yeah.
So, and he said that the way how it's going is they fund that first year, and then if, if you meet the requirement and there's the money, then you may get it the second year, which is exactly how we got the money for this grant.
Right.
And I'm willing to apply for it. If, if we have an opportunity to apply, let's apply, because we always have a project.
We get the opportunity, I'm, I'm turning in that question for granted. Tell me no, you know.
I'd rather hear no than, oh.
You don't say no, you won't give any.
You could've.
Uh, E D C, K E S, K C D C.
Nothing need to report.
We, we did have a E D C meeting last month, uh, I don't, I don't remember what we talked about.
Okay, in this building?
Yeah.
But I did, got all the useful.
K C D C didn't meet, will meet this month. Uh, plumbers' planning, that's it.
Looking to do a game.
Second.
Second, I don't, I didn't pay for nobody else's, but-